Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, July 17, 2018. Welcome to our meeting. I'll ask you to check your mobile devices at this time. If you have cell phones, tablets that might make a noise during the meeting, please move those to silent mode or cut them off at this time. Madam Clerk, I'll note the roll call of the board. All Commissioners present, with the exception of Commissioner Mulvey, County Attorney, is present and manager as well. Remind you tonight, if you have a presentation to make, please come to the table in front of the room or to the podium. And Commissioners as well, be sure you activate your microphones when you speak so that everybody can hear you on the web or in the room or on television, wherever they may be. We are delighted tonight to have Pastor Ed Stevenson with Arnie's Fairview United Methodist Church with us, and I'm going to ask Pastor Ed to come forward and give our invocation. Let's all stand together, and then we'll have the pledge.
God us all, we come to you this balmy afternoon in the heart of God's country and the heart of your country, Lord. We believe that you are very nearby. Lord, we thank you for this group of men who have, we have sent, we have elected, Lord, to do the best they can to render what they believe to be best for our county. Father, it's a thankless job, but we hold them up to you in a very special way. Father, to those who gather here, help us to remember that differing in opinion is not necessarily disagreeing in love. Father, we all have opinions, and we all have the right to be wrong occasionally. We just ask that you keep us as your children, Lord, as we speak and as we think and as we act. Again, Lord, we just ask now that you continue to watch over each and every one of us. And Father, in spite of ourselves, we ask that you have your will in each one of our lives. We ask this in the most precious name we know, that of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you being here tonight. Now, we're glad to have Boy Scout Troop 197 with Troop Leader Lee Britton tonight. Come forward, guys, and lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, guys. If you'll just hang right there, turn around, and we're going to come down and make a picture with you. All right. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda in front of you for several days. I will entertain a motion at this time for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Wayne, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item five, approval of meeting minutes. Gentlemen, you've had the minutes for the May 29, 2018 Board of Commissioners recessed meeting minutes, and you've had the minutes for June 5, Board of Commissioners, rather, free agenda meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's all of us, Madam Clerk. Item six, we have no presentations tonight. Takes us to item seven, scheduled public hearings. We have several tonight, and the first public hearing comes from Community Development Zoning Map Amendment, ZMA 2018-02, and public hearing. This will be presented tonight by our Deputy County Manager and Planning Director, Mr. Scott Carpenter. Evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. It's a pleasure. Madam Clerk, how are you? Good. This first item is from Community Development Zoning Map Amendment 2018-02, and this is a request from Todd Binnick and Carissa Parker to rezone eight parcels of land that total 21.07 acres from its current zoning of R1 residential to R3 residential. The parcels are accessed by Roy McGalliard Avenue, which is State Road 1279, and it is classified as a local road. The parcels are served by private wells and private septic systems. There is no public water or sewer in that immediate area. Two of the parcels within the rezoning application do have structures on them. The Carissa Parker parcel has a modular home on it, and the other parcel has a Class A manufactured home on it. The home was set up in violation of the zoning permit, and so the zoning permit was for the placement of a modular home, and this was the initiating basis for this rezoning request tonight. The R3 zoning district would permit the Class A manufactured home to remain on the property, and if you'll recall, a Class A manufactured home is one with vinyl siding, pitched roof, and shingles. The remaining parcels are vacant and wooded or used for agriculture, tree, farm, nursery type of activities. So to the north is Zone Conservation District Estate as well as R1, and it is vacant, wooded as well as nursery. To the south is R3 and PRMU. Several residents are located there as well as vacant woodlands. To the east is R1, and there are residences, vacant woodland there as well, and to the west is Conservation District Estate and Planned Residential Mixed Use zoning, and that is all currently vacant. The surrounding area is very rural, and the majority of the land is underdeveloped with the exception of a few residences along Roy McGalliard Avenue and Snow Hill Church Road. If you've driven down Snow Hill Church Road or Roy McGalliard Avenue, you would have found that there's a mix of housing types there. There are single-wide mobile homes, there's double-wide mobile homes, single-family residential, as well as a lot of agriculture and vacant woodlands. That sort of describes the general area. On the rezoning map, if you look at it, to the south is all R3 zoning, and adjacent to the west of these parcels is R1 zoning. Now, one of the things is, is that this request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and the current zoning district for this area would permit certain residential uses as well as limited commercial, mixed use, and recreational uses. However, the current zoning would not permit any type of manufactured housing. The proposed zoning district, R3, would expand the allowance for both residential and commercial uses, including Class A and Class B manufactured homes. Class B manufactured homes are single-wide mobile homes with vinyl siding and a pitched roof. And I just already described what the Class A is. Class B manufactured homes would be allowed in the R3 district, but it does not permit manufactured home parks. The Planning Board recommendation, they did meet on May 24, 2018, to hear the rezoning request, a motion was made to recommend approval of the rezoning request, and the motion was seconded. The chairman asked for a full vote of the board, and the vote was two to two. This being the case, the recommendation to approve rezoning case failed, and so they really failed to make a motion that had an agreement to make a recommendation for or against to this board. Some of our comments are that though the area was included in the Lake James Planning area, the parcels involved in the rezoning are approximately 1.26 miles away from Lake James. Between the lake and the subject parcels are hundreds of acres of Conservation District zoning, which provides certain environmental and residential use protections for the lake. There are two-site-built single-family dwellings, one modular home, and three manufactured homes on Roy McGalliard Avenue itself. The number of manufactured homes on this street and within this area dramatically outweighs single-family homes. Considering the need for affordable housing in the county, staff felt that it would probably be reasonable to allow some choice of manufactured homes. Another option for the board to consider could be to rezone the parcels to the Residential Two District. And the reason that we chose that is the R2 residential district would serve basically as a transitional zone between R1 and R3. And there are only four differences in uses between R1 and R2. So the first one is communication towers are conditional use in R2, not allowed in R1. A duplex dwelling is a permitted use but is not allowed in R1. Multifamily is a conditional use in R2 but not allowed in R1. And of course, we don't expect any multifamily housing out there because there is no water, public water, and there is no sewer. And the other difference, number four, is that manufactured home Class A would be allowed in the R2 zoning district. So those are the options. So the staff's recommendation on this is to, we think it'd be a good idea for the Planning Board to revisit this and to discuss the R2 zoning option, which did not come up at the Planning Board meeting, and to try to get a unanimous vote to come before this board. And that is my presentation, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Gentlemen, you've heard Scott's presentation. Before I open the floor for the public hearing, are there any questions? Does Scott own this matter from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like, Scott, nothing has changed since you made the presentation at pre-attendance, right?
No, sir.
That's all right. Okay. Thank you. That's all my head.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I understand the clerk has several who have already notified her that they wish to speak on this matter, so I'll ask her to call them in the order that she has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tony Branch.
Okay. Well, about the last meeting, this meeting is about manufactured housing. It's not about crucifying Todd Binnick. I'm Tony Branch. I've been in the mobile home business for 40 years, moving them, selling them, and it's a need that we need in this county. There are 12 mobile homes on Snow Hill Church Road within a three-mile loop of Rabbit Ridge, Homestead, Mobile Home Subdivision, and Roy McGalliard Road. There are 122 mobile homes on that road within a three-mile section. There are 12 mobile homes that they have to see either direction they go. And you know, everybody, no disrespect for Mr. McGalliard, I'm sure he worked hard for his money, but everybody can't live in a $300,000 house. You know, they have to start out, you know, somewhere. Thank God there was mobile homes when I first started, because I lived in a mobile home when I started, and I'm sure some of y'all have had people live in manufactured housing. And the mobile home on Snow Hill Church Road was there. This is what I can't understand. Mr. McGalliard built this house on Roy McGalliard Road, and he was such opposed to mobile homes. The mobile homes was there before he built the $300,000 house, so I can't see where that's a, that's a, would be a problem, you know, because, and that's what I can't understand. And I'm sure if the county will approve this mobile home for Todd, that everything Todd has, you can see, he brings it up above standard. And I can't see where that would be a problem. I mean, he's going to make this, and he's trying to help somebody get in a house, one of his workers. He's not wanting to build a mobile home park, he's just wanting to get one person in a home. And the mobile home, well, this is another thing I can't understand. The mobile home is on a dead-end road, and the people, except one lady, I understand, is the only one that has to see the mobile home, but she has to see all these other mobile homes on the way in and out. So I can't see how one mobile home is going to affect, you know, the people riding in and out. I mean, if they'll give the boy a chance, he'll make the house, if you know Todd Binnick, you know how he does things, and he'll make it acceptable, I'm sure. And in the last meeting, somebody complained about it bothering their utopia and sitting on the porch reading a book. I can't understand how a mobile home is going to affect somebody reading a book or their utopia, that they have to ride down a dead-end road to see this mobile home. If they don't want to see them, there are more mobile homes on Roy McGalliard Road than there are manufactured houses, I mean, than site-built houses. So, I mean, I can't understand what the big deal is about one mobile home, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Laura Brown.
Can you go in a different word?
Madam Clerk, call the next person, please.
George Andrea.
Mr. Branch was talking about me, not Dave McGalliard, so I'd like to correct that mistake. My name is George Andrea. My wife and I currently live in Catawba County. Up until May of this year, we owned a house and 50 acres on Roy McGalliard Avenue. We sold the house and 10 acres, but we continue to own 39 acres that's on R1, and this acreage is at the intersection of Roy McGalliard Avenue and Snow Hill Church Road. So there's nothing at the intersection but our driveway. And the parcel on one side is adjacent to all the other parcels that Binnick has asked to be rezoned. One thing I would like to point out, in the information that you folks saw from the Planning Board, Scott Carpenter and Pete Minter never posted a photograph of our house. It's just the driveway. Our house, 3,300 square feet, all brick, and all the materials in there were above average, and we were very proud to build it on family property. So that photo was not included in what the Planning Board saw. In fact, all they saw was our driveway, our motorized gate, our farm fencing, which cost us quite a bit of money. Maybe not as much as a single-wide, but quite a bit of money. So the Planning Board voted against the first version that was presented to them to rezone everything that Binnick had, over 100 acres, I think, to rural mixed use, and that was turned down. I think there was only one vote for it, and we spoke at that Planning Board meeting. And we spoke at the last one as well. So this is version two. So bear with me a second. There's quite a bit of motocross behind us, and that is the activity that caused us to have to move. The noise was a nuisance, just as it spelled out in the ordinances that you folks have, plain and simple. This version two is being presented to you folks under the veil of providing more affordable housing to, in Burke County. I'll give you my summary of what this version two is. I think it's, I think they want to put trailers in to be used as dormitories for a motocross school. This has been stated before by Binnick to my realtor, the Brown family, and quite a few Facebook posts, so it's out there. Ironically, I was asked to speak to the Lincoln County Commissioners about motocross and the impact on someone's property, and of course, their ability to, you know, have some peace and quiet. There were 100 people there at that meeting. I was just surprised, they were full. And there was the folks who were promoting this motocross school, this gentleman was the general manager of the White House applesauce plant down there, so he had a lot of influence in the community. Well, the Commissioners there in Lincoln County voted it down, so they listened to their constituents, and they used common sense. A motocross school, as the promoter described it then, was 10 to 15 riders a day, three to four hours a day, complemented with class time, right next to their neighborhood, and these folks were a lot more in number than we are on Roy McGalliard Avenue. Secondly, and finally, from our standpoint, Susan and I could no longer tolerate the noise and what we considered to be disrespectful of our, where we lived. So, and that commercial motocross activity continues today, and the key word there is "commercial." It's taken two years for us to sell our home, and I don't normally talk about money, but I can tell you that we had several offers, some of them, of course, like any other situation, they're low and you don't accept them, but we had a gentleman who was a realtor who offered us a sum of money that was $65,000 higher than what we eventually settled for to sell our house. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of hours working in life to have that kind of money. So that's why we left. The current owners of the house are stringers, they're great people, they're both out of town, or they'd be here tonight. One of the other neighbors, who's on Snow Hill Church Road, who likes to read a book, Paul Wurzinski, he's out of town on Family Matters, and that's why we initially asked that we change the date of this hearing. So I ask you to put yourselves in our situation and how you would react, and I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Andrea.
Mr. David McGalliard.
I'm David McGalliard. I live about, oh, less than two miles from this proposed zoning change. Zoning changes affect the community, particularly when you talk about the zoning change from R1 to R3. And R3 is an allowance that would allow mobile home parks under a conditional use, and we're concerned about that. We would like to protect, at least our opinion is, protect the R1 zoning and not allow this change, which is an encroachment on R1 zoning. Even though it's right there, it's still an encroachment on R1 zoning. And we'd have to ask, you can ask any realtor, a change from R1 to R3 is going to impact value in reality, so that's one important thing. And zoning changes should look at how it will improve the neighborhood, not try to make up for what the zoning change does. And we really feel that this zoning change is not going to help our property value. If you were building a home and you looked at an R3 zone next to where you're going to build your home, you would change your mind. When you drive down Snow Hill Church Road, there's a mobile home park on Snow Hill Church Road, and that would change your mind of where you would build, and that's what we're concerned about. We're also concerned about this approval for Mr. Binnick. He put this, I get you called it a Class A mobile home, and not in compliance, and the only way we know about it is somebody inspected, and then he requested this zoning change. And we're concerned that if you approve this, who's going to manage it? Who's going to be looking for what he puts in next? So we really request that you give this strong consideration. Every time we make a zoning change, it impacts neighbors. And we as citizens in the area, we're saying, when does this issue end? Like George was saying, first it was the R8 request, and then it's this one, R3 request. Is it going to be an R2? I say, live with the R1, you know, like the rest of us. We live with it. We make adjustments. He knew what it was when he acquired the property. It was R1 then, so live with it. You know, one kind of site issue, I was on the Planning Board for about six years, and we really looked to the County Commissioners to support Planning Board decisions, and we made some serious decisions. So, you know, we really request that you look at what the Planning Board said, and even though there was a quorum, but there, in essence, was a no vote to approve, you know, to give him his change. So please, look at it as an encroachment on R1 zoning and disapprove it.
That's, any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. McGalliard.
Thanks.
Next, we have Ms. Shirley Brown.
I give my time to the board. I'm going to speak in other languages. So I presented, prepared a PowerPoint presentation because I'm a nurse practitioner by trade, and when you make statements, you're supposed to provide evidence to support it. So do I just ask them to afford that?
Next slide.
So my name is Laura Brown, and I grew up on Roy McGalliard Avenue, and my mother still lives there, and I wanted to be here tonight to talk to you about my concerns for both her property value and her quality of life.
Next slide.
So R3 zoning would allow for mobile home parks, recreation vehicle parks, and non-residential uses that are not currently allowed under R1 zoning. And this is the actual verbiage from the Burke County zoning ordinance, and you can see that last line there says that Burke, public water should be available to most areas within this district. And Roy McGalliard is a dead-end road. It is an isolated part of the county. There's no public sewage, there's no public water, there is no infrastructure there. Next slide, please. And according to the county's Strategic Land Use Plan, there's no plan to provide that infrastructure, and I would direct your attention to both the housing and infrastructure goals in the plan. And you can see that the focus for the county's development is in higher density development in primary growth areas, near municipalities along the I-40 and 70 corridors, and near more urbanized areas and at selected nodes throughout the county. And the infrastructure goal focuses promoting higher density development where adequate infrastructure already exists. And I would like to emphasize that And I would like to emphasize that there is no infrastructure on Roy McGadyard Avenue right now. It doesn't make sense to rezone that property to allow for uses that the county's not willing to support or sustain. And it doesn't appear that that's in the plan. Next slide. So this is a map and the strategic land use plan. My point here is that you can see that little black circle right on the edge of the blue, and that's where Roy McGadyard Avenue is. It's actually part of, as Scott said, the Lake James Special Planning Area. My point is that it is not in the green or the gray. And that is the primary and secondary growth areas for the county, as we've determined in the strategic plan. Next slide. George mentioned property values, and I think in the pre-agenda meeting, maybe Mr. Mulvey asked if this zoning change would affect the value of surrounding property, and you were told that that wasn't the case. I don't think that's true. George alluded to it. And I talked to Clint Lidle, who is an appraiser here in Morganton, and he indicated that he thought it would diminish the value of surrounding property owners if this was zoned from R3 to R1 zoning. Next slide. So I want to talk about the integrity of our zoning laws. And, you know, I think when you took office as Commissioners in Burke County, in the oath that you take, you agreed to uphold the laws of this country, the state, and the county. And our zoning ordinance is part of our county law. So this zoning request, and I think Mr. McGadyard has pointed that out, and Scott referred to it, came after Mr. Bennick was found to be in violation of the zoning ordinance. And again, I think somebody referred to the request that was made last year for RMU zoning. And this is part of the meeting minutes. So Mr. Bennick knew last year that this property was not zoned for mobile homes. That was part of the impetus for the request last year. So he was found in violation this year, and it wasn't a simultaneous application process. Next slide, please. So I wanted to kind of step you through the actual timeline. He applied for the application for the single-family home in December of 2017. And then the next slide, you see that Mr. Schichtel from the inspector's office went out, inspected the property. He was found to be in violation on January 30th. And then the next slide shows us that he applied for the rezoning on February 15th. So 16 days after he was found to be in violation. So it wasn't a simultaneous process, and he was certainly in violation when the application was made. And I wanted to give you a visual, if you would go to the next slide, of what we're talking about. So I don't know much about manufactured homes, but I know that that is not a new anything, really. And it's not a modular home. And I think most people in this room would know, just looking at it, that it's not a modular home. And it's hard for me to believe that somebody of Todd Bennick's intelligence would think that. So in conclusion, I firmly believe that this request should be denied because the landing question is not suited to the development that R3 would allow. The surrounding property owners would lose value in their property. And if the rule of law means anything in Burke County, we cannot allow people and set a precedent for violating zoning ordinances, and then when you get caught, you just request that the ordinance be changed, and you go on about your business. That wouldn't work in any aspect of our legal system, and I don't know why we would tolerate it here. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn Wurzinski.
I really hadn't intended to speak. I thought I would need to give my three minutes to someone else that needed to go longer, but since I get a chance, I'll use it. My husband and I have lived on Snow Hill since 1991. It's a small country road, quiet. We love it there. We're runners, we can run the road and not worry about traffic. Recently, Mr. Bennick has had a permit approved to have an event there for the Rotary Club, which is a wonderful institution, but they're saying it could be up to 500 people at this event. That's a lot of traffic on Roy McGadyard Road. There are a lot of mobile homes on Snow Hill and Roy McGadyard. We don't have a problem with that. If he's just wanting this mobile home, which the tires shredded on Snow Hill when he pulled it in, if he's just wanting that approved, why is he asking for 21 acres? There are eight parcels approved. I don't understand it. So we're asking you to please deny his request, and hopefully, we're not here again for a third or fourth time. And we really appreciate you listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Andrea?
Oh, my, thank you.
That's all the cards I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone else here tonight to speak on this matter? Come on up, please, and state your name and your address, please.
How you doing? I'm Todd Bennick. Glad to be here. Well, not really, but... So a lot of things been said, and not a person behind me has ever reached out to me to ask me what's my intentions, what's my plans. And we've talked about a bunch of things, but the focus is simply on one thing, and that's a double-wide trailer. I bought that trailer, and when I bought it, I was told it was a modular. So under my understanding, it was a modular, and I was fine. Regardless to what you've been told, that I'm a rebel and I bend the rules and do things my own way, and we've got off track on a lot of things, but ultimately, I bought this house as a modular. I don't know the difference between a double-wide and a modular. I was told they're built in the same factory, off the same assembly line. I don't know if that's true or not. I'm not a excavating contractor. I know a lot about dirt, but I don't know anything about building houses. I don't know a lot, I know a little, but not a lot. I will tell you that I bought a double-wide on P Ridge Road seven or eight years ago. When I walked through that home, it's on a gravel road, and when I walked through that home, the windows was busted out. It was scary to walk inside of. It was just a train wreck. It was bad. I bought that home for $25,000. I spent about $12,000 on it, fixed it up, and made it nice, and sold it for $60,000. I like to see the diamond in the rough. I know how to make something out of nothing. I've done that my whole life. And so I do have a plan for this house. I have no plans of doing a single-wide development or all these things that these guys assume. And I'm going to tell you, I learned something in school. I didn't complete school. I completed the ninth grade, and I joke and say that I got out of school with honors. It was an honor for them to see me go. But something I learned in school, I learned some valuable things in school, but one thing I learned in school is I was taught what the word "assume" means. And the guy wrote it up on the board, and I remember it like it was yesterday, and you guys have heard the story, I'm sure, a thousand times, and we all know what "assume" means. It makes an ass out of you and me. That's if you take the word. And ultimately, there's been a lot of assumption of what I am and what I'm not, and what I've done and what I haven't. But I have no intentions on doing a single-wide. I have intentions of building the house on top of the hill, overlooking my property. I bought 116 acres there approximately. And we tree farm, I'm doing tree farms. I do ride dirt bikes on that parcel. I was a professional motocross rider, and there is some concerns about the noises that we make. And I have a son that's followed my footsteps, and I have two daughters that ride also, and so on and so forth. But ultimately, I have one plan. I have a caretaker that I plan to put in this house. It's been the intention from day one. It's still the intention, and the good Lord will provide a way. If you guys turn this down, it's not the end of the world for me. I've got a plan. Always have, always will. And I did not deliberately put this house in place, deliberately come down here and get a permit, thinking I was going to sneak by the system. I bought this place under the assumption that it was a modular. I don't know the difference, don't know, and I asked the inspector, how do you know, how do you tell? And he goes, well, it's right there, you take this panel off, and right there it is. And I was like, okay, clears the veil. So what I need to do, so I came here and submitted a zoning change because I've already poured footings, because I've already done all these things, the septic systems has been installed and inspected, the well's been put into place. So I've spent a lot of money to get to move forward, and that's what he said, do you've got two choices. You can ask for a change in the zoning, or you can move it. So I would feel like that anybody, any of you guys or any of these guys out here would probably have done the same thing, instead of throw that money away and say, I did it wrong, I'm going to redo it. The option was to ask for this zoning change. So that's why we're here, and that's where we're at. I would, I don't know the difference between, I'm not one that's going to sit and study. I was told, I was recommended to go with the zoning that I've asked for. The reason we rezoned the whole 21 acres or so, my sister-in-law lives next door to me or down the road there, and part of that. The reason it was recommended we do that was so it was not a spot zoning, where it was just not one lot. So like I say, a lot of assumption went on with what I've done or not done. And ultimately, I zoned everything from the railroad track up the hill to Roy McGadyard the same. I'm asking for that to be rezoned, just simply because it wouldn't be a spot zoning, it would be a bigger tract of land there. So that's the whole point, the reason that was done. Be glad to answer any questions for you guys, but it's really not a complicated situation. And if you guys got any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennick. And during the public hearings, not a time that we entertain questions, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight to speak to this matter?
Can I say something else about a game?
Shortly, you can.
So I make no assumptions about Todd's plan to use for this property. I do think that it's important to realize that if you rezone this property as R3 today, and he sells it in two months, the people that are living there are stuck with that zoning. So it's not about as a particular person, with maybe some exceptions in terms of their past behavior. But I do think that if you rezone this property, we are going to be stuck with it, no matter who owns it in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak to this matter? All right. Hearing that, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, from our pre-agenda meeting, we had a lot of discussion on this item. And let me just give you three options that it appears we have tonight, and I'll ask our counsel to follow along. And if there are other options or things we need to consider, please chime in, JR, on that. We can vote on the R3 zoning designation as originally petitioned by the applicant, or we can deny the applicant's rezoning request for the R3 zoning designation and identify reasons for denial, or we can refer the rezoning petition back to the planning board for consideration of the R2 zoning designation as proposed by the planning department. So at this time, let me ask if there are any questions about any of those options, or if JR would like to expound on any of those options. JR?
You're correct, Mr. Chairman. You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can send it back.
Send back, would the applicant need to reapply for an R2? Or what would a send back mean exactly?
It would go back to the planning board, and it would be up to Mr. Carpenter to see if he can find something like R2 that everyone can agree on, and take another vote down there at the planning board, and then it would come back before us a second time.
So would that be done without another application? Or could it be done without another application?
I think so, yes.
The planning board could just simply review the thing again?
Right. But you would have to have another public hearing when it came to us.
At this board? Okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions before we entertain a vote on this matter?
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, I have one question. In our package, we have a consistency statement, going back to what some of Laura's presentation. In my consistency statement, it says that the 2016-2030 Strategic Land Use Plan identifies this area as the Lake James Planning, Special Planning Area, and that the plan recommends both recreational and residential uses within the area, and that the zoning act can be considered consistent with the 2016-2030 Land Use Plan and our Burke County zoning ordinance is reasonable. Does that consistency statement hold true? Scott? I think we want Scott to answer that, is that okay?
Yes, sir. It holds true. When we did the Strategic Land Use Plan, we did it, and it was very general. And so for this area around Lake James, what it supports essentially is a medium-to-lower density type of residential development, which is what single-family residential is, double wides or single wides. Because out there, it pretty much is not going to be any denser than one dwelling unit to acre, acre and a half, even though it has R1 zoning. There's no public water or sewer to drop those densities down.
All right, thanks.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Please.
Mr. Attorney, if I would consider denying the applicant's request, am I violating that consistency statement?
No, you wouldn't be. Just because a change would be consistent doesn't mean that you are violated by not approving it.
That's all the questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Other question?
Mr. Chairman, Scott, one of the speakers referred to the integrity of our zoning, and part of this has been outside of our zoning policies for some time. Is there a reason of why that went on? And are we just changing, are we changing our zoning ordinance to help the community? Or are we trying to bail somebody out of the wrong decision?
So whenever anybody comes in or does something, and they're out of compliance with the ordinance, we always, to everybody, it doesn't matter who it is, Todd Bennick or any member of the community, we offer them the opportunity to come before the boards and state their case of why the property should allow the use that they did, even if it's in violation. What we do is we double-permit fee them for the violation, so it's separate. And when the rezoning itself comes, we're not looking at the violation that they did, we're looking at everything to see if it's consistent or if it fits in well in a certain area. Okay? So this rezoning was sparked by Todd Bennick's double-wide, but when we do the rezoning itself, we're not looking at the violation. Does that make sense? We're looking at, does the R3 or R2 zoning make sense in this? And then we make a recommendation on that.
Let me put the question another way.
All right.
Since we don't have a majority vote to accept this, but if we go back and revisit this question, are we weakening or strengthening our zoning integrity?
I would say you're probably strengthening it, because I think that the area that is being requested to be rezoned is a mix of uses there already. And so I think if you look at a transitional type of zoning, the only real difference is a double-wide versus a single-wide house. That's really the only real difference. You're not going to see multifamily or anything in that.
You said a double-wide... You said a double wide versus a single wide house. There's no single wide house. A single wide mobile home?
No, sir. A single wide mobile home would not be allowed. So under the R2 zoning classification, the only difference between R1 and the R2 would be that double wides are allowed. That would be the major difference. And duplexes are allowed as well, but they can look just like a single family home.
I have several other questions, Mr. Chairman, but I believe the council has probably correctly advised us that the best avenue at this point would be to send it back to the plan and let them have a second hearing on it. That would be my suggestion.
Other questions? Comments? All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we do send it back to the planning board, let them review it again and do their best to resolve the issue that more of all the community will be happy with the decision.
All right, thank you, man. Okay, gentlemen, you've heard this motion, refer the rezoning petition back to the planning board for consideration again. All those in favor, please signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's four to zero. All right, thank you. This brings us to item number two, Community Development Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, Text Amendment, FTA 201801. And again, public here, this will be presented again by our Deputy County Manager, Plank Director, Scott Carr. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is a very short request, actually. This is a request to change the flood damage prevention ordinance and to amend the text. In the text currently, the ordinance specifies and designates that the building inspections director is also the flood plain administrator for Burke County. However, recently, the senior planner took over the duties of the flood plain administrator. The change requires a text amendment to the flood damage protection ordinance for it to be consistent and in compliance. So the request, the proposed text amendment was drafted to amend Article 4, Section A of the flood damage protection ordinance and designate the community development director, me, or my designee as the flood plain administrator. That way, we can be flexible with the review. But the real reason we're changing it is when requests come in to the office that have to do with the National Flood Insurance Program elements, that's the time to catch these things. And that, the building inspectors are out in the field, so they're not available to review and approve these things. So that's a major reason. So the planning board did hear this at their May 2018 meeting and they voted unanimously to recommend to this board to accept the change.
Okay, thank you, Scott. All right, gentlemen, you've heard this information. Before I open the public hearing, I'll ask if there are any questions to Scott at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Scott, this is necessary to be in compliance with the rules and regulations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none at this time, I'll open the floor for the public hearing. Anyone here tonight to speak to this matter? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, since it is mandatory and to be in compliance, I make the motion to adopt ordinance number 2018-08 and the following consistency statement. The proposed flood damage prevention ordinance amendment is consistent with statutory authorizations provided within Article 21 of Chapter 143 and Articles 6 and 18 of Chapters 153A and the Burke County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance and is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendment gives the county more latitude to delegate that authority to different qualified personnel rather than to just one person.
Okay, thank you, man. Gentlemen, you've heard this motion. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand, please. Madam Clerk, that's four to zero. All right, thank you, Scott. This brings us to item three, comes from our clerk tonight, ordinance adopting new code of ordinances and public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. The court code of ordinances was adopted in 1993 and republished in 2008. The county's code has been legally reviewed and updated by attorney Dan Walker at Nene Code. As mentioned at the pre-agenda meeting, the changes include the removal of dead wood such as provisions related to privileged licenses which were repealed by the legislature, updated language for statutory changes such as the definition of state of emergencies. It used to be proclamation, now it's declarations. The word unnecessary was removed for the noise ordinance in response to court decisions. The new animal ordinance was added and the old one was removed. New informational state law references were added and obsolete ones were removed, and there were no policy changes inserted into the code. The board is asked to adopt the ordinance approving the new code following a public hearing, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you for the summary. Gentlemen, we've had this information, we discussed it here in pre-agenda. Any questions to the clerk before we act on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, just for the audience, this is that code of ordinance book. And Madam Clerk, I believe I have 5,422 questions. Mr. Chairman, though, I think that obviously somebody did a lot of hard work, had detailed work, and of course, this just, this goes over periods of years of editing and correcting and bringing us up to snuff. And it's not one of those things that we just need to do to be in compliance.
All right, thank you, man.
And I do not have any questions.
All right, thank you. Other comments, questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone here tonight to speak to this matter? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adopt ordinance number 2018-07.
Thank you, man. Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, signify by the uplifted hand, please. Madam Clerk, that's four to zero. Thank you. This brings us to item eight, informal public comments tonight. Madam Clerk, anyone to speak?
Not now.
Not now. No other comments tonight, all right. Thank you very much. This brings us to item number nine. Just before we hear item number nine, we need to make one clarification. So I'm gonna call for about a two-minute recess, Madam Clerk, and allow us to counsel with our attorney for just a second before we move into the consent agenda, okay? We'll recess. All right, thank you for that recess. I'll call us back to order, Madam Clerk. With that, let me call your attention to item number six, County Manager's Request for Additional Deputy in the Town of Hildebrand. We have not been able to get the final draft of that contract back, so I'm gonna ask before we hear that that we entertain a motion to pull that item off the consent agenda so that it can be fully ready for next time.
Item six, any consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Some of them?
Hearing that, all in favor, signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that'll be all of us. So we'll now hear the consent agenda from our manager without item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have 11 items on the consent agenda now. First is BOC, Designation of Voting Delegate for the NCACC Annual Conference. Item two, BDI, Approval of BDI Laws. Item three, Clerk Appointments to the Council on Aging. Item four, Clerk Reappointments to Burke County Smart Start. Item five, County Manager Appointment of Margaret M. Pierce as Deputy County Manager, Finance Director. Item seven on the original agenda is Finance Approval of Authorized Signers for County Bank Accounts. Item eight, Finance Approval of Appointment of Debt Setoff Officer. Item nine, Health Department Child Protection Child Fatality Teams Physical 2017-18 Report. Item 10, Tax Department Tax Collection Reports for June 2018. Item 11, Tax Department Release Refund Report for June 2018. Item 12, Tax Department Tax Collections Bank Attachment for Delinquent Taxes. That concludes the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Brad. Gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda. All those in favor, or entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, signify by the saying "I"?
I.
Those, no, thank you. Brings us to item number 10, items for decision tonight. We have none. Brings us to reports and comments from the board at this time, and we'll start with our attorney, Mr. Simpson.
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. JR, Wayne?
We had a tourism board meeting today and everything went well.
Man.
Mr. Chairman, some amendments are attached, I will not go over those. I do want to remind you of the Clean Air and Water Convention. It'll be the fifth annual. Kay has done an excellent job. She sent you some, and that's where I printed this from, by the way. And hopefully, we have some Burke County managers and people who will be signing up for that. Remember that that is free. It is paid for by, I think, I mean, I think, it's paid for by Lenore Ryan and other members who have donated money, so there'd be no fee for it. And hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that. I do plan to attend part of the sessions, so I welcome you and encourage you to do The other thing I wanted, I promised you I'd try to get those numbers for you about the Confederate war and people who didn't come back, lost their lives, killed in action. World War I from Burke, this is just from Burke County now, Burke County residents. World War I was 10, World War II was 190, Korean War was 11, Vietnam War was 19. In the Civil War, it was 1,112 of our own Burke County residents who lost their lives. And the biggest and the best news I could possibly tell you today is two things. We did survive our week-long family reunion. We had 186 unduplicated people. My wife and I housed 11 extra people and fed them for seven days. And the other big news is Shirley and I became great-great-grandparents. We have a little girl. Her name's Hannah Pauline Street. Her pastor is, her father is a pastor at Roanoke Mountain, Tennessee.
Thank you, man. Congratulations, that's a great, great accomplishment. And to be able to live with that many family members for a week, that's another accomplishment. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I've got a picture for you. If there's any way to make it any bigger? Nope. Oh, well. They've got some roofing material up over, I think, what's gonna be the booking area, and they are going at it as hard as they can. So we'll update you as time goes on and events take place there at the site.
And that's our new jail site, right, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
All right. All right, Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two reports, one for the library and one for the Burke Cooperative Water Committee. It's attached in the reports, and nothing to add to those.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
No reports, thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I had a couple of reports in the agenda package from, one from BDI and DSS, and I would call your attention to the DSS Annual Report. A great report, covers all kinds of different areas of Burke County, and I would encourage you to take time to look through that and get more familiar with what all is happening through our Social Services Department. I want to take this time tonight, I see in the audience, we have our new Burke County Chamber of Commerce Executive, Tanya Stevenson. And Tanya, I've not had a chance to meet you, but would you like to stand or come to the podium and introduce yourself? Would you mind?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for welcoming so far into Burke County. I'm so excited to be here, but just in case you haven't met me, I'm Tanya Stevenson and new president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and really excited to be here and to help move this county forward and to do all that we can to help our businesses grow and our organizations grow. So I look forward to a healthy partnership with Burke County.
Thank you, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Anything that we can do for you, we wanna work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I recognize our new Finance Director and Deputy County Manager, Margaret Pierce. Margaret, stand up. And why don't you come do the same? I know we put you through that at pre-agenda, but this is a regular meeting, so let's just do it again.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to be here, I'm Margaret Pierce. I'm excited to be working with Paul for the last few weeks and the next couple. He's done an amazing job here with the county, and I look forward to the opportunity to try to do just a portion of what he's done for you.
All right, thank you, Margaret. And again, welcome to both of you in Burke County. Thank you. All right, this time we'll hear vacancy reports and announcements, rather, from Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following vacancies on county boards and committees. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, the Aging Regional, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment and Planning Board for the ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Board, Partners Behavioral Health Management, the Animal Advisory Board, the Board of Health, and the Region E Development Corporation.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, as always, I encourage you and our citizens to take advantage of these opportunities if you can serve our county and community in any of these ways. I hope that you would take an opportunity to avail yourself to that. Item number 13, closed session. We do not have need for a closed session tonight, however, we do have need for some special celebration tonight. And I want to recognize a couple folks, and we have some refreshment back in our chambers afterwards, and would invite any of you to join us in that. But we have one commissioner who's getting older, and we'll be celebrating his birthday, that's Commissioner Carstle, happy birthday. We'll do that. But then, as Margaret already alluded to, our Deputy County Manager, Finance Director, Mr. Ims, is with us tonight, and Paul, I'm sure you'll be back every month to sit along with us in the audience, and we'll be looking forward to that.
I can't find anything better to do, Jim.
Then what we know, you'll be here. We want to take a few minutes tonight to recognize Paul, and I'm gonna ask Paul to come forward, and I'm gonna ask the commissioners to come down so we can get a photo. We want to give Paul his very own name plaque to take home with him, so he won't forget who he is and his wife. He can put that right in front of his dinner plate, and she will know who's in charge all the time. You didn't even have this one missing, did you, Paul?
I did not. I was. I've been there over the years, I'm not the only one who, yeah. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's get quality.
[applause] [inaudible] 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 All right, again, I invite you to join us in chambers for some refreshment, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Leave it's all up to Madam Clerk.